Justice Froh. It might help if I put my glasses on. All right, approval of the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Call second.
Throw call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Approval of August 20th, 2024 city council minutes and September 3rd, 2024 special city council minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Throw call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, move on to our financial report, Ms. Ardemani.
Okay, this is for August 2024. For city general, income was 375,957.37. Expenses was 434,408.80. That left a negative operating income of 58,451.43. For water and sewer, income was 500,91421. Expenses was 822,732.44. Left a negative operating income of 313,592.23. And streets, income was 92,6569 cents. Expenses was 468,883. And in the city general, the negativity that took some of that was some engineering fees. We had a semi-annual bond interest payment, the drones for the police, and some car expenses for the police. And for the water, we had some more bonds, another semi-interest payment, and RDOT, which was some engineering fees for the stoplight. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ardemani. Department reports. We'll start with the museum.
So, the Tonnytown Historical Museum Board met offsite for our meeting in September. And we met at, we started at Rogers Historical Museum, and then we went to the Luerta right across the way and had our little board meeting. It was official semi, very casual. But the reason we went up to Rogers is they currently have some of our artifacts. Temporal loan to them through beginning of November. If you haven't made it up there, there's still time. They did a whole exhibit about alcohol in the Ozarks and just the history from its very beginning, all the way through prohibition and, of course, Tonnytown. They immediately thought of Tonnytown when they were putting this together. So, they have some of our artifacts. It was really great to go as a collective group, and they actually opened up after hours for our group, which we were very appreciative of. We decided, we've got some board members that were, you know, their term is up, so we decided to put a call out to try to fill in some more board spots. And overwhelmed a little bit. I created a post last week, and I, you know, I've created a post before, got one or two people interested. We had eight people respond within 24 hours of that post being made. There's just been a lot of interest in Tonnytown, and it was really great. The group of people that are potential board members, a lot of them are from the community, businessmen and women, some educators as well, and then also some people from outside of our community as well. So, we will be going through a process of board well as far as picking who they want to join the tribe. And we're also wanting to add our junior, to our junior board members. We recently had Tori Penalto step up from junior board member to a regular voting member. She turned 18, and she took on the challenge. So, we really want some more kids. 16 and up unless they have a reliable goal that can get them to and from meetings. 16, obviously, they can drive. So, that's the goal. If you know anyone that is interested in Tonnytown history museums, send them our way. This is a great way for students to get more involved with the community, and it also counts for service hours that I know everyone has to have now. So, that includes meetings and any of our events, they would get hours for those. Our digitization project is still underway. Julie has really taken on this project, and it's really exciting seeing her come in every single day, excited to do cataloging. I've never seen someone get so excited over measuring something and putting it in and making sure all the details are correct, but this is, this is her thing. And we've got well over 600 items in catalog at currently, and that is just a drop in the bucket for all, all of the items we have over there. Again, this will take months, if not years, and it is an ongoing. Every time we bring something in as an accession or a loan, we have to create a log for it. Visitors for August, I talked a little bit about that from Great Festival, but we had well over 200 people in August at the, at the museum. So, that was, it's a great, great number. Cries from the Cotton Field has increased our visitors. A lot of people have come into the museum and said, "I just saw the film, and I wanted to learn more." Or they saw the film and they just wanted to come to Tonnytown. And so, it has really helped our outreach from, you know, not just North West Arkansas. I've had people from out of state come who, you know, just happened to hear about it. And the great thing is, it's not going to stop. Cries from the Cotton Field is streaming now on Tubi, which is a free app. Anyone can go home, download it, and watch it on their phone, on their smart TV, laptop, whatever. And we just found out last Friday that it has been optioned for Amazon and Hulu. They have purchased the rights for it. So, and on top of that, we got DVDs in today. So, if you would like a copy, come see me later on this week. They're going to be $20. We're going to do a discount for our VCH members. They're going to be 15. If you're a friend of the museum, 20 if you're not. Become a friend of the museum, save five bucks. It also gets entrance to all of our events, everything for free. Once we get closer to Black Friday, these will be live on our online shop, so people outside of our area, outside of the state can purchase. So, whoever needs a copy, just send them our way. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, if you could put that on Facebook about the gallons of wine that was dumped in the street, that was such an amazing article. I was so, I was just like, really, really to it.
My, my project, when I'm not helping Julie with cataloging and all of the other admin stuff, I am doing a deep dive into newspaper research. I have about 27 years so far of Tonnytown history from Springdale News, Fayetteville Democrat, and other local area newspapers, including some from as far as Las Vegas, reporting on the very first mayoral election in Tonnytown in 1910. So, wealth of knowledge, and it's also creating great content for our social media, because people love to see what happened on this day 100 years ago. And there is some rich history, especially when we get into prohibition time in Tonnytown. A lot of familiar names, you're like, oh, shoot.
I just thought that was extremely interesting. I, I really enjoyed that one. As a matter of fact, I'm probably going to reread it, because I'm afraid I might miss something. But if you guys haven't seen or read that, it is very interesting.
Yeah. Lots, lots of fun reporting for Tonnytown.
Thanks.
All right, next is police. Chief Jensen.
Well, the month of August, we responded to 748 calls for service, filed 15 accident reports, served 6 million warrants, 1287 outstanding, 6 million outstanding fines. Training hours are up to 1860. Total citations issued were 195, eight speeding, 91 for other traffic citations, 57 criminal, 39 city ordinance improper driving, 456 total warnings, 161 for speed, 295 for other traffic warnings. Did have a great festival last month, so, you know, we kind of talked about it already, but a good year for us, one of our better ones, fairly uneventful for us, so we'll continue that in the future. Any questions?
I have one thing, do you mind sharing about what you did today, which I think is really cool?
Sure. We took possession of the drones today. The only thing we're waiting on is the extra batteries. So, today was with the company, doing some training with them. We'll finish up some policies, get those implemented, and then get a few certified with their licensing that they need to have, and then we'll be live with those.
You have to go do the drones today.
We did.
We're getting afraid. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
On the budget report that we heard, we had a $10,000 vehicle expense. Do we know what that was? Do you know what that went to?
I'd have to work to see. Anyway, speaking of vehicles, the three cars that are out there did sell. Total 15,000 for all three. Two, one was 5,500, one was 6,000, and one was 3,008 dollars. So, those are sold and gone.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, absolutely.
Thanks, Mark. Chief Krug is in training tonight in Conway, so he, his report is in here. If you have any questions on that, you can contact him via email, and he should be back hopefully Friday. Mara, we'll move on to public works.
Good evening.
Mr. Clark.
Our water line project is inching closer to completion. All pipe is in the ground. Pressure testing is scheduled to begin next week. Cleanup and site restoration will continue for at least another four to six weeks, probably. Clean sewer line project is also coming to an end. Testing of the line and site restorations in progress. Probably just a couple of weeks on that project away from substantial completion. A final walkthrough was performed last week on the Wildcat Creek Water Line Project. The contractor's working on the final punch list and cleanup, so that should be finishing up there within the next couple of weeks also. Appraisals have been completed, and easements are being acquired for the supply line to the new water tank. Plans and cost estimates have been completed for the South Barrington Drainage Project. The street department will begin addressing the issues as time and money allows, or if grant money becomes available. Currently, the 412-612 sewer extension plans are being finalized. This extension of approximately 3,500 feet will provide sewer service to the 412-612 interchange, where we expect considerable development once the highway 612 project is complete. As a reminder, this project will be funded with the last of the proceeds from the 2022 bond. Appraisals have been completed, and easements are being acquired for the Montagani Half Street Improvement Project, which may happen next year, if Mark can find the money. The Montagani Sewer Line Project has officially been shelved until a source of funding can be found. It's likely that this project will come back around in three to five years, probably. Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering Firm has been selected to develop plans for the Barrington 412 intersection improvements and pedestrian tunnel. This is the first phase of the STBGP grant. The next phase will be relocation of utilities, and then finally, actual construction. I recently contacted the state engineer for USDA regarding the Washington Water Authority Service Area west of Tonnytown, asked for a formal ruling on who owns that service area. It's been two weeks since I contacted him. I haven't heard back yet, but hopefully, we'll get some good news soon. As you're aware, the bid has been accepted for the 612 Water and Sewer Relocation Project. As you're also aware, the same contractor that's doing the 412 Water Line is, was the winning bidder on the 612. In order to sure, ensure that our project is completed, I've asked that the notice to proceed on the 612 project not be granted until the 412 Water Line Project is substantial completion. That's all I got.
Any questions? Okay, we will move on to the building report.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Ms. Latham, building report and community developments.
Good evening. On the building report, it's kind of the same thing I've mentioned the last three months. As you can see, our commercial valuation is doing extremely well. It's almost doubled what it was in 2023. Project fees are doing well, too, kind of holding, holding its own and helping out the residential building fees. Although, in August, the residential valuations were up compared to July, along with the fees. So, I continually think that this is going to be a trend. Hopefully, if we have some action Friday, the feds tomorrow, that they're going to actually lower interest rates that might help out regarding the building area for homes, along with some development going on. Specifically, we do have a new subdivision that will be going through its process that's on the corner of Clink and Morsany, about 100, 100 residential, R3, okay? It's not rezoned. So, we've got some subdivisions kind of in developments. Hopefully, as they continue to proceed, we'll kind of see that home building start up again. On the community development department, as James mentioned, Burns &amp; McDonald was selected, and everything's been sent to RDOT, including our score sheet. So, we're waiting for them to give us a contract specifically, and we'll get down to negotiating that to get the engineering and environment done. Want to mention about one of the projects we've got going, and I would be glad to kind of present this comprehensive grant study from Simple Grants, if that's some desire of the council. I worked with this company, I think I mentioned this when I was in Illinois, and they got about 75% of the grants that we were applied for, we received, which is very, very positive. What we ended up doing was giving them not only a 10-year capital improvements plan that we put together and was approved by this council, but also identified some other areas. One was water and sewer, one was police, one was fire, one was stormwater, which we do have a stormwater plan, and be looking for funds, especially from FEMA, since we're looking at some pretty substantial amount of money to take care of the stormwater needs. And then the other one was parks and community development. And we also included streets, which streets, as, are actually a pretty good, especially in trail and sidewalk development. So, they targeted very specific grants. They gave a great area, when they actually can apply for all the statistics on it. So, I don't know if that's something you all are interested in seeing, or want to see what we're seeing, but what I'm doing is, is I targeted, today we actually had another kind of a final meeting with them, Zoom meeting, just kind of finalizing everything. So, identified eight specific grants that I think we ought to probably target at. And so, I'm excited about this. I think we're going to see some really good things come out of this. So, does anybody have any questions on that, or would like to see it? I'd be glad to either introduce it or give you a copy of it, and we'll go from there.
You mentioned the, I'm sorry, you mentioned the flashpad. We're still a couple of weeks from finding out.
Yeah, I'm going to mention that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You said any other questions, I, I'm sorry.
Tomorrow at 1:30, we're going to get the final on the heritage district from our engineers. We're excited to see that coming. There's some 3D pictures and stuff like that. One of the questions is, is, does the council want to see that, get a presentation of it in a, in a county meeting? That work? Okay. I will check with the engineer tomorrow and find out if the meeting in October will work for them. If not, we'll do it in November. Okay? We're also, as James mentioned, we're seeing a lot of activity out there at 612 and 412. I will tell you, there is a piece of property, about nine acres, that's currently under contract. So, I anticipate seeing a lot of activity, especially when we get utilities out there. It'll be doing really well. I appreciate, I know I wasn't here for the county meeting. Appreciate the council approving the bid for the street maintenance. We are scheduled sometime, I believe, next week to meet with APAC, who was the one that got the contract, and identify where they're going to start, so we can get this out publicly. You know, with school traffic and everything out, we want to make sure that we're not holding up the process. So, we'll, we'll make sure everybody knows about that. As Tim mentioned, we did get the grant submitted on October, August 29th, excuse me. And it's going to take a few weeks for them to process all those grants, and then we should hear something of whether we made it to the second level, which is actually when you go down to Little Rock and introduce your project in front of a group of people that will be the selection committee. So, look forward to that. Bond issue, we appreciate the University of Arkansas Extension actually putting together the flyer. Thought they did a really good job. And so, that's some marketing material that will be out specifically on the bond issue. On the budget, I did receive everybody's department head's goals on Friday, and then we're moving along. Mayor and I and Pat, we're scheduled to meet with the department heads on the weekend, the 23rd, to go through their operating budget, along with their capital. In council meeting on, in October, I'll hand out the budget goals, so you've got to get a perception of exactly what we're looking at doing next year. Along with, one of the things that I'm working on is a policy, a financial policy statement. And it will help, it'll be part of the actual budget. It'll outline just exactly what we're trying to do, which I mentioned about the revenue being 85% going to operation, 10% to capital, and 5% to reserves, fixed assets. Spells it out a little bit better. So, I want you to know, I've been working on that, and I think it'll be easier for you guys to understand where the money needs to go and how we're going to do all this. So, I'm looking forward to getting that to you. It also includes some benchmarks, you know, we need some benchmarking. So, it includes some of that that will help you in our decision-making. Because you remember, I'm always believer that we don't make decisions by emotions, but we make by facts. And so, that's what we're hoping to get to. I also want to mention, I have completed a new Salary Administration and Procedure Guide, and I will actually make that presentation to council at the next county meeting. So, anybody have any questions?
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll have comments from citizens on anything that is not on the agenda.
Hold up, Fran, it's all good. Rhonda Dowden, 462 puzzling. It's about Bochi Ball. It was a great weekend. I was worried, car show, we didn't do that this year. We had a steady flow of people, vendors did good, nice day. It turned out awesome. But I want to personally thank C&amp;K Engineering for donating as much as you did. We appreciated that. And Danny for stepping up and donating. Misty, oh my God, you're a godsend. If it wasn't for her, we wouldn't have pulled it out of the dirt at the very end on donations. Thank you, thank you, thank you, whatever you put your mind to, you do well. And the mayor for donating and spending the day there. It does make a difference when everybody jumps in and helps. And Pat, I want to throw a thank you to Pat for changing the brackets, so that the first bracket, the games went to 11 points. So, the winning bracket, they went to 21. We got to go home at 4:00 instead of 9:00 or 10:00 at night on the Bochi Ball. And it was a great day. It really was. Motorcycle people are just awesome. They put their stuff together, do it really well. Also, I want to thank Scott Ardemani and his crew for keeping up on bathrooms and, and ordering the extra bathrooms and trash, and he was running like a crazy man. But it takes a village to do this. So, that leads us into Halloween. It's a coming. So, we're getting ready to ramp up on that. That's why we invented, we used to not have events, you know this. We never had events, and we decided, back in that day, it was crazier than it is now. And we couldn't figure out how to bring the community together, to get to know the people that sit in these seats, and get smaller businesses in to donate, so that you do these events to meet each other and to bring us together. So, we started out slowly. Halloween was first, nine benches I decorated. All the businesses brought the candy, and it's grown each year. It's doubled each year. That was our best one. So, we did walk in the park, or chalk in the park, movies in the park. So, we've come down to Bochi Ball, and Halloween are our best bins. And I think it's, the citizens love them. So, what I need from you guys is to step up, throw some money at it, and volunteer your time, and come out to the Halloween deal. The gazebo's going to be yours to decorate, the mayor and the council, decorate it and to bring the candy to it. I'm going to work really hard this year, sending out letters to big corporations, see if we can get some more candy in this year. We do not have a theme yet, but Ms. Amber, who's not here, and Ms. Olivia, her daughter, came up with some great themes. So, they're on my page. Go vote on them, and we'll decide probably within the next week what it's going to be. So, but thank you, everyone, even Ms. Candy Black, the bubbles were awesome. The adults loved it, and Tim even showed, he was awesome, too. So, we appreciate all the help. Thank you. Terri. Williams, I got that right.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else?
Daniel. Kenneth Love at 18702 Clearwater. Got a couple of things this time. Got Northwest Arkansas, let's see what they are called. Regional Planning Commission will have a public meeting of their TAC, which is the technical side of the business advisory committee on, let's see, Thursday, September 19th at 10:30, down here at their Northwest Arkansas place on 1311 Clayton Street. So, they'll be doing that. If anybody can attend, attend, that'd be great. We've had a lot of political discussions in the committee meeting. I've been guilty of attacking people because they attacked me first, and I apologized for that. But I want to say I appreciate Mike and Tim very much for your work. I don't believe it's been two years already. It's amazing how fast time goes. But I appreciate what y'all do, and I appreciate Larry for the way, and Mayor, too, for the way y'all run the meetings, when somebody's got something to say, three minutes is not enough sometimes. You have to go a little further. So, just want to let everybody know that these two gentlemen have done a great job, and I'd appreciate your support for them if you so feel obliged. Another thing is the, I put in a complaint last, a couple of weeks ago. I was up at 5:00 something, and 5:25, they was down there banging on their trucks or tailgates and all that. And I got a, a copy of the, the regulation. And I know we put a lot of time, y'all have put a lot of time into doing those regulations times. It's still not right. I don't know who wrote it. I don't know who's responsible for creating that document. It's bad. That's all I got to say about it. It needs to be fixed. The other thing is, we still have issues with our, I don't know if y'all have had a chance to see the, the article by Perry. I've got a copy, I can send you if anybody wants it. But ADQ won't respond. They won't even talk to them about it. And they keep saying, you know, the, the last request was to be more testing, but they won't say when they're going to test again, so I don't expect them to test again. But it's serious. But it's serious, and we got to do something about it. And I know y'all are working through on one side of the process for water and different things, but air needs to be there too, whether we need to start a useless issue or whatever. But just want that to keep that on your mind. It's a serious issue, it's not going away until I do, I guess. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kenneth. Anyone on line J? All right, we'll move on. Approval by city council members to waive the three reading rule for all ordinances on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sorry, Mayor Jake, I just noticed this. The item B is actually a resolution of an ordinance, so we don't have any items on the agenda that are ordinance. So, I just saw that, I just noticed that now.
I will make that correction.
Yeah, so I'm sorry for interrupting.
All right, let's move on. We have, oh, business none, new business, an approval of a resolution to contract with C K Engineering for the design and construction of Fletcher. Mark, do you have anything that you want to say? Does any council member have anything that they would like to ask, or did we get it all taken care of in the Cal?
We've been talking about Fletcher for a long time, and we need to get started. And of course, we're going to have to get it surveyed, and a lot of work that needs to be done before final design is made. So, feel very confident, C K, to get it done. I will tell you that their cost estimate or their estimate, their actual contract is extremely conservative compared to much of the larger firms. I believe they'll do a great job for us. And I would recommend that the council would approve the contract. It'll be in different stages, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, this one specifically addresses just the Barrington to Clint's portion, and looks like this is cleaned up from the last time. One thing I don't think I did ask last time, is the expenditure on this engineering contingent upon the passage of bond issue?
No.
I know it's got to be engineered to do it, so, okay.
Well, the thing, the reason for that is, is two reasons. One is, you've got some development going on, as you guys know. Secondly is, is that they anticipate the majority of that property going to Clint. I mean, we've had some people asking about it, it was currently, you know, there was a subdivision that looked at doing R four, and then now there's another company actually looking to purchase that. So, without really having the actual design and a completed thing, it's hard to be able to determine, you know, how these subdivisions would be laid out, what their responsibilities are, all that sort of stuff. So, yes.
That makes more sense. And so, with the new subdivision potentially to the west of the one that's currently already approved, would there be any cost sharing?
Yes, I'm saying.
Just making sure that's clear. Thank you, sir.
It would be part of your development agreement.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm seeking out a motion.
I'll make a motion, let me approve it.
I'll second. Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we'll move on to B, an approval of a resolution to approve the final plan. Brad? I have that big smiley head on there.
Well, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'll come back to you again. We've revised this into a resolution form. We relooked at this again, and did our due diligence. Mr. Eichman has helped us out on this as well, but we're here to accept the approval of this final plan resolution. Do you guys have any questions?
It looks fabulous.
Thank you, Mr. Eichman.
Absolutely perfect. Thank you so much.
This is the way we'll look going forward.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
My motion, we approve.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
We'll move on to C, an appeal on the planning commission's decision of a CUP and LSD for the Verizon cell tower. Again, Brad?
Once again, council, we bring this for you. You guys asked to look at this a little further, and the design has changed, and we received that design change yesterday. So, I did my best to update the CUP application and our staff report for you to review. Andy will be here to answer any questions as well. I know there'll be public input to speak about this as well. Two things to make mention of on our conditions. Staff's recommendation is still what it is, we are asking to approve this. One of the conditions listed on there is that it has to come back through large-scale review with the new site design, and we will review that again. So, it will still have to come back through planning commission for large-scale review and approval. And the second thing is, I talked to Andy today, is to make sure we have at least two cell providers that'll be attached to this tower. And so, we just, we thought that'd be a good condition to make sure that we add to that. So, that's what we have before you.
Okay, before we go any further, do we have any citizen comments?
Candy Black, three sixty-one South Penaltone. I just want to say, we really appreciate what they have done, Mr. Rook, strike is to move the cell tower to the north, to where we're not in the fall zone anymore. So, we have no objections to it. So, but we really appreciate all the support from y'all and the compromise from them as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for listening and taking it back to the client and working with them on that. We do appreciate being heard.
Thank you. I think it starts with you guys, and specifically Misty, Amber, Angie, Larry, and Mike giving me the message that I needed to take back. And to, and I do appreciate Vertical Bridge being willing to do this. This is going to be a very, pretty large added expense to them, they're willing to do that. And also, I think we need to thank the landowner as well for being willing to work with Vertical Bridge to allow us to move it. We looked at that middle back portion, but the landowner has plans, I don't think he's filing them yet, for a building to go there. So, that was out, but we worked with him and went back and forth. And Vertical Bridge has even increased the rent to get him to do that. So, I think it was a great effort on everybody's part, and I appreciate this council, I appreciate the mayor for giving me what I need to take back. We would like to officially amend the CUP application. I've got copies, I think you have them in your packet, but I can just hand them out to you guys so we can have it. Yes.
Thanks for being here, by the way. We appreciate it. How far from the old, the previous location is that new tower?
It's as far north as we can go on that property. I haven't measured, but it's several hundred feet.
About six hundred feet.
That's okay. My mathematician behind me.
Sure. Oh, sure, I'm so sorry. I do have a couple of questions, but they're probably more legal for Mr. Eichman. Can I ask those now, Mayor?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So, I, on the surface, I don't have any heartburn at all. I appreciate it, I appreciate that everybody's listening and understanding our concerns. Mr. Rook, strike, thank you. I think you're doing a great job of representing your client and representing them with what the city has in mind, so thank you. I understand that the blacks are okay, and you don't have, from the map, you don't have any land area there at all. But there are some others, there's the Messinos, looks like Sue Kovin owns some property there and upward investments. And I haven't heard from any of those folks, so my only thought, and this is for you, Mr. Eichman, I don't know, I mean, can we even consider an appeal when it's very different? Or do we have to sort of go back to square one and start over again? Especially since we haven't talked to those folks? Or do we, as a council, have a right to approve or deny that appeal, and then what happens?
Yeah, good question. You can approve or deny the appeal, that's the way it's afforded you now. And the appeal can be on the application as amended, and, you know, point out that our CUP process starts with a public hearing in planning commission, and the neighboring property, after rezoning, the neighboring property owners are notified. And so, you have a public hearing in the planning commission, planning commission considers, either approves, recommends for approval, recommends for denial, but ultimately comes here for the final determination. So, that's the posture that you're in, and it's really a, at this point, would be approve as amended or deny.
Okay, thank you. And again, on the surface, I don't have any concerns. However, I learned about it at five fifty today. So, I honestly can't in good conscience vote to approve the appeal, but I am fine with what I'm seeing on the surface here.
My understanding is, the appeal includes that this goes back for a full review before the planning commission, so I assume that it's basically, we're saying, okay, we accept your appeal application with the understanding and the caveat that we're basically starting this process from where you started two months ago. Is that not correct?
Essentially, except for that what this does is this approves the siding with the conditions, and then they have to go through large-scale development, so it has to meet all the development codes that we have.
And those adjoining landowners will get the same notification that the other people got this last time.
It'll be the large-scale process, which I think had already begun. Yeah, it had already begun, so they've already been noticed.
They have been noticed, okay.
Excuse me, I've had a couple of people shake their head. Brad, could you come and clarify? Sorry, I was, my microphone was not on. Brad, could you come and clarify? I saw you shaking your head now.
Yeah, this is for the use of the land itself, and we did do our due diligence, I do have it on file, should you want to see any kind of records of public notice. Went out to the adjoining neighbors and within two hundred feet, those have been applied for, we did not get any response back from anybody. That's part of our due diligence to send that out, has been published in the newspaper. So, from that point, the CUP application, if it's almost like a rezon, has been done, when it goes back to the large scale, it will not be notified to the public again.
When did this all come up? Because I didn't see it in Friday's packet, again, I learned about it for the first time today at five fifty.
We received, we received the updated plan review or site review yesterday.
So, Tim, I can address that a little bit too. Andy called me on Friday, if you can't tell, I'm recovering from my weekend of being sick. But Andy called me on Friday and gave me a heads up, like, told me that they'd gone back to the property owner and had heard the feedback from the council, and said there's a strong possibility it may move. And I said, well, let's, let me know. And so, I think on Monday afternoon, called me back and said, have an agreement, and, thank you, have an agreement to move the tower, said they'll have a drawing of the location to us, and then it came the next, that came the next day.
So, if, by chance, we denied the appeal, they by all means can come back, right? There's a period of time that they wait, which at this point probably isn't very long, and they try that again, is that correct?
I think the issue for the council is that the Telecommunications Act allows for an expedited appeal to federal court. So, if it's denied, their applicant could have an expedited appeal for federal court, and what could go in is the tower that was originally applied for, which was the one on the, closer to the blacks. And based on what we have in the record, you know, I would have concerns about that. Because there has to be substantial evidence in the record that would support the denial, and if it meets the code, then there's a problem there. So, you know, this compromises to avoid that, and to avoid the issue that was raised, and I think we'd do that.
Well, again, I think that's all fine, but without reviewing it, I think we're asking the council to vote on something that we think might be fine. I have a hard time with that. Maybe we take a recess, that's up to the mayor, but at any rate, we certainly don't have to, there are because of.
And I will say one thing too, we had a full presentation at the Cal meeting, and Andy did ask before the meeting, he said, do I have to go, do I need to go through all that again? And I said, I don't think so unless the council wants to. So, I do, I mean, this is an appeal, so I do encourage you, if you want to, to go through that again.
Please, by all means.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be up to the council on that, because we had a, I don't know how long it was, forty-five minutes or an hour discussion at the Cal, but if you wanted them to go through any part of it or answer questions, I would definitely do that now.
Is there, instead of doing that all at the end, is there any chance we can just take, I don't know, I'm sitting on that long, fifteen minute break, read over it, come back with any questions we might have about it? Whatever you prefer to do, if you want to do, do, I'm good with that.
I get it, these are all valid questions.
But it's a, it's a pretty quick response.
Well, I get it, and you asked a valid question, how did we get here, and why did you only get it yesterday? It took time to negotiate and reach the landowner, so that, and we've just been two weeks. I was actually impressed that we were able to get it done, quite frankly. All the notices have gone out before, as Brad said, so we're very comfortable from a legal standpoint, that the notices have been out, and people could have come to the planning commission, and they could have come tonight, because there was notice for tonight too. And you've asked for public comment, and we've gotten it. As far as, if you want to look at it, I'm happy to look at it, let me just take you through, just to put it in the record, I'll go through these pages you have.
That'd be great.
Everything else in the record remains the same.
Can we do the five-minute version?
Yes, I'll do, I'll hopefully do the two-minute version. But everything I said at the committee, the whole meeting, is the same as far as we meet the ordinance, we think we've satisfied all the criteria, we, all the due diligence we did before choosing this particular property, all the elimination report I shared with you. The only thing that's changed is the location on this property. So, the blue I highlighted was the previous location that was up against the blacks' property, which is to the south, who was here in opposition, and we were able to move it up to the orange square. That also shortened the yellow line, which is the access easement. And so, we are in the corner, out of the way of the owner's business and what they're doing. And again, I mentioned earlier about the building that was going in the back, which limited us to this one location. So, after talking to Vertical Bridge, the applicant, sharing with them the concerns, the council members and the blacks shared, I was able to use that to go back, and they used that to go to the landowner. With that said, I want to echo what Justin says, that if it's denied tonight, our only option's going to be to appeal, and we're going to have no choice but to go back to the blue spot, right? So, we're hoping that what we're showing you is good faith effort on behalf of Verizon and Vertical Bridge to work with the blacks, work with you guys. What we need in return, if you agree, is the approval tonight of the appeal. If it doesn't happen tonight, I don't know this, I have not had this conversation, so I know what Tim wants to say to me, and I'm not going to, I don't want to tee it up, but this is, if you guys are on board, it needs to happen tonight. If you would like some time to look at this, absolutely fine, I'll sit right back down there and wait. But the only change is the pages that I gave you.
Okay. Really, I have, you know, you addressed the ordinance, and really I want to go to specifically the first part of it, and how comfortable you guys feel that it meets this criteria, because the word shall are in there twice. And so, you know, that was one of my issues. words shall are in there twice. And so, you know, that was one of my issues with the last location. So, you know, if you guys are comfortable with, it's the first sentence in 153.121, it's in the, it's the last page of the packet, it said, "All developments shall be designed in such a way as to minimize any potential negative impact on the surrounding area. Special attention shall be given to buffering commercial developments from adjacent single-family areas." So how do you respond to that?
So we moved to a lower tower.
Okay.
So we took the light away.
Okay.
Right? We moved to a monopole, so it's not the big three-legged monster. Like I said at the last meeting, there's no light, there's no noise, no dust, no odor, no traffic, right? So it's very innocuous use.
Sure.
So we think we're as inobtrusive as this can be, right? You've still gotta have the utilities and the infrastructure. With regard to buffering on the site plan, the original one, which we'll have on the new one, is the landscaping.
Okay.
So that's the buffering part that we made.
Okay.
So we think we meet all those criteria.
That's good enough for me. And if I can throw in one other thing, in legal terms, this movement at warp speed, quite frankly.
Coming from a quarter of where he's running.
My two cents that I want to throw in there is, you know, Brad said in conditions we had that we would allow for at least two carriers. Two carriers, I think it should be more than two. I think two's too few.
Let me just respond to that, because that's a good question. So Vertical Bridge, who's gonna build and own the tower, is in the business of renting space on that tower.
Yeah.
So co-location, I think, is really what the city is looking for, which is what Vertical Bridge does. So there will be co-location, hopefully.
Rather than having multiple towers for, you know,
Right.
one tower with multiple different carriers.
And then also, just to kind of back that up, the third page of what I handed out is the elevation view of the tower. Those apparatus at the top, the darker pinned one is the Verizon antennas at the top. Each of those fainter, three below it, are spaces for additional carriers and co-location. So we're showing you on the plans, we've got up to four. And there's four carriers out there.
So I'm suggesting in those conditions, we make that, instead of saying two carriers, we put four.
Well, it says at least, so we can always be greater than.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think that's...
And I wanted it to be more than...
At the very least, they could only put two.
Right.
And hopefully. I would rather see four, just because I don't want multiple towers to pop up.
I agree.
You know?
Well, and your ordinance, so under your ordinance, a new tower would have to come back to you for approval, and they would have to show, like I showed, that the other towers nearby won't work.
Right.
And because we're in the middle of two towers that are, one's just under a mile, one's just over a mile apart, that's gonna be tough technically to prove. So I think we're accomplishing what you're going for.
Okay. With that, I'd make a motion that we approve this.
Hold on a second. Row call. Row call, please.
With conditions.
Daniel?
Ah, yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you to all of you, and I really do appreciate the feedback you gave me, that you gave me the feedback. So thanks.
Thank you for working with us.
Thank you so much for...
Great work, Mr. Rodenstrike.
Thank you so much for working with the citizens.
Thank you, and whatever you out here, Justin knows what he's doing. Thank you, guys.
All right. We will move on. Comments from Alderman? Start down there with Mr. Moskowian.
I'm totally unprepared with any comments. Thanks for everybody for coming out. I do have some things I do want to address at the next meeting about the upcoming election, specific, not my personal election, but for the tax. So I don't have those things prepared tonight, but I think it's a big, big issue that probably needs to be addressed up here by us. Congratulations, Ms. Piazza, and all the others who participated. I was, I was a no-show, I'm ashamed to admit, but I did see that there was a lot of traffic out here. So I promise I will be here at Halloween in the park. Thank you, guys. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Ms. Ferris?
Thank you. Mr. Rodenstrike, is he still here? There he is. Thank you.
He left.
It was, I understand the hard work that you put into this, and I very much appreciate it. My role as a fiduciary of the city is always just to take care of the citizens. I don't hear anybody complaining about it. The blacks are happy. Nobody else has complained. I think you guys have gone above and beyond to answer our concerns. Thank you for the last three minutes there. It gave me a chance to review, and here we had to say. So I'm very, very thankful. I think it's great for the city, and thank you. Thanks for being a part of that. Mr. Lovett, thank you so much for your concerns, especially about the noise ordinance. I'd love to talk to you a little more about that. I remember how much time we put into that noise ordinance, and I likewise, before the noise ordinance, had been woken up at 5:30 in the morning with the exact same thing. So I'd love to talk to you more about that, and I can assure you, we very much want that to be rectified. We'll work on that. The air issue thing, I think, is a big deal as well. And there are some really serious issues regarding Boston Mountain and AD EQ and various things going on that we really need to get answers on, and I appreciate the pressure that you're applying. So thank you for that. To the rest of you, thanks so much for being here. I'm glad that fall is in the air, and appreciate working with each of you. Thanks so much for being here.
All right, Mr. Ardeman?
Don't have a whole lot. I failed. I was a no-show, as was somebody else. I didn't come expecting to be here in the evening and root on the winters. Hey, wasn't anybody here? And I thought, was it canceled? No, I knew it wasn't, because there were still rumors. But I do appreciate all the effort that everybody put in, and appreciate everybody showing up, and hopefully we have some satisfied people, and some more satisfied people. And Mr. Lovett, just keep on, I mean, just keep on. You gotta be the fur in the saddle, so to speak. Keep it up. Thank you.
Pat, Ms. Piazza?
I just want to say thank you again to everyone that came out to the Family Fun Day. I want to say thank you to the foundation for helping with the Kids Zone. You guys were in the hot sun, the hottest part of the event for the whole morning, and I'm very grateful for that, because, I mean, I wasn't standing in that heat for all those hours, so thank you very much. The bubbles were a huge hit, Candy. I was very amazed. I did not know you could do that. It was very cool. Thank you to our local sponsors. We could not do this event without our sponsors, and we've been so blessed. They always come forward and they always help make it happen. I'd like to thank Pat, Angie, and Rhonda also for helping us pull this event together. It's a long day. Now, it wasn't as long this year, but we were still there at 7 o'clock, and we went home at 4:00. So it's still, still a long day. I'd like to thank Williams Soul Food Fried Chicken, and the Builderbacks, the C&amp;D Concessions, and Shake the Planet. I love that we've added food trucks, and Williams Soul Food has already agreed to come back next year. And so you can come back. Save the date, September 13th, Saturday, September 13th. The car show will be back, motorcycles, food trucks, the kids market. We had nine kids have booths from kindergarten to high school that came and sold their goods. There was little dinosaurs and bracelets, and it was really awesome to see them bring their skills and make some money and show that they could do, it really boosted their esteem, showing that they could really, you know, show their business skills. So I was excited to add the kids market this year. Congratulations to Roger and Colby Penalto for taking over first place. That was an alibi for folks. Down to one point. I've never seen it like that. It was incredible. And then poor Colby, being the young guy, making that winning point, that had to be so much pressure. Next, start thinking about Shop with the Cop and Halloween in the Park. Both of those are our last two events of the year. So we will be, I will be talking to each and every one of you, asking for your help on those events. And just thank you for coming out, and thank you for being part of our meetings. We really appreciate it.
All right. I just wanted to say that...
What about you? I'm sorry, Mr. Montez.
Go right ahead.
I'll keep it short and sweet. It's the mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
I was thinking we were coming this direction. Sorry, Danny.
It's all right. I don't really have a whole lot to say, but yeah, thanks, thanks for everybody for coming out, and I look forward to Halloween in the Park. That's it?
I do want to say thank you to everybody that helped, that donated, because we were struggling. We were really struggling with donations the last week, and Misty stepped in, I mean, Zach, his company, and we had Mr. Montez and Mama Zeez, and I just...
Mark Latham.
Mark Latham. I just really appreciate everybody coming together and helping get that, get those donations up there, because we really did need to get some things paid for. That being said, we're gonna need more donations for Halloween in the Park, and we're gonna need more help with booths and different things. So I hope that you guys will step up and help with that event. Anybody that's wanting to set up a booth needs to contact Rhonda Doudna. And I believe Mr. Spurlock has something you want to say.
I just want to echo that. The mayor allowed me to do some video out at the park. I do have that together. My software crashed last night, so if we'll behind, I do have it together. I'm gonna post that on our Facebook page. It's gonna be called "Cries From A City Employee." But I really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed. We can use it as a promo. I'm giving this to the city, but I'm gonna try to post that on, you can steal it. So, but anyway, I'm gonna try to post that tonight, but I'm gonna say thank you for allowing me to do that.
Also, Bob News did a story on that. And Brad, I can't wait to see yours. You do an awesome job. I appreciate you. And also, thank you for going around. I know that you was all over the place, and Mr. Ardeman drove you around in a side-by-side, so you could get some pictures and videos, and appreciate that. And speaking of Mr. Ardeman, he and his crew, Fernando does a fabulous job in the park. But whenever it comes to an event, Mr. Ardeman's famous saying is, "I'm gonna spit shine that park." And I appreciate him so much, because he does make sure that it looks fabulous. He does an amazing job. I do want to address something here. The ordinance about the noise, I've already started working on this. It's in the process. We're trying to get it corrected and make sure that it has teeth. So I, that's already started. It's already in the process. And hopefully, we will have that to be able to present next month, maybe? Okay, perfect. All right, and now... Mr. Eichmann, do you have anything that you would like to say? All right, with that, I say we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Yep.